Most Congress has had me called aboard the country once again. God, we just thank you for some more nights and working together for a little while. God has just prayed to approve this meeting now to transpire. And Lord may be each and every one do what we have been elected to do, and that's to do and serve the people of Polk County to the very best of our abilities. Praise the Jesus Christ in my prayer. Amen.
Motion, please.
Please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
You see, anything bad this morning, it's on like a few people hanging out there. So, we're up, so, most handy news every week I get, I mean, we're getting it up from them here.
Uh, I'm, I'm one of them.
We got a long day in the night, we got two hours time, I think, about one, five, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Part of the plan is for a man to take his money, make a motion for two, three, four. There you go. Motion by John, second by Daniel, any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Next is approval of reports of Austin. Motion to approve. Got a motion by John and a second by Daniel, any discussion?
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
Donna Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
And James Woody?
Yes.
Next is approval of notaries. We have no, notaries, we didn't have none handed up tonight. Next, budget amendments. We have three. One, sheriff's office, one from the road department, one from the county executive office. You got time for that? Hold it down. We made a topic this evening, uh, in the, one handed up tonight. That's right. Resolution in the budget, we need to handle it after that, correct? Ways, yeah. Ways might be a puzzle. We just got this resolution card. For this budget amendment? Yep. We got time for that. We got one. We got that already. The issue for the employees, whereas legislative body Polk County is layered that it is not increased salary levels in the form of pay raise for two years, but it is allowed on bonuses that minimize increases in cost of living last year. Whereas, is desire to give such a bonus as hurt you? Now, their board may be allowed by Polk County Commission, record session, Polk County courthouse in Big Tennessee, this 18th day of November, 2018, that any full-time employee training one year or consecutive work time or more shall receive a bonus of $1,360 from any part-time employee, the same attributed time shall receive a bonus of $680. Any full-time employee who has worked less than one year of consecutive work time shall receive a bonus of $680. And any part-time employee with the same attributed time shall receive a bonus of $340. The agriculture jurisdiction office shall receive a percentage of the bonus set forth in the associated budget amendment for this resolution. Only workers who are employed as of November 15th, 2018 shall be entitled to this bonus and only employees are designated in county general fund 101 or area. Motion who approved?
Second.
Got a motion by John, a second by Daniel, any discussion?
Yes. How do you figure this amount? That's a good question.
What, what?
Any of them? I think, uh, this specific number, which you, uh, where is it coming from?
Coming from the fund balance, because one time it's spent, and the amount is the closest we can get to actually taxes, TCRF, from their checks, actually around $1,000. Somebody a little less, somebody a little more, depending on the opinion, and how they file them, but the 1360 is what we use last time. Last year, make the bonus actually around $1,000, during that phase.
And county can afford it.
Yeah. I can't actually think of the, yeah, place. Five percent. And we just want to do taxation here. For tax, just alone, county general part is $4,334,000, and that's at 90 percent collection, and that'd be added to the current, yeah, we should be good.
The next question is, why isn't anything from the road department here?
Because they're under account.
They're under their own budget, and that budget is separate from county general. Are they not county employees?
They are, under 131. When you give raises, you don't give road department raises, you don't have that.
That's how they set their own place, they don't have to go by our handbooks, they're independent and much.
Schools is, schools is, schools is.
The number one thing I get questions on is when are they gonna fix my road, when are they gonna fix my road, when are they gonna build my schools? It seems like we're...
We're not over the bonuses, or their bonuses, their increases, we're also not over the however we can pay schools.
And they also don't get property tax money, so be sure to tell everybody that asked you that, that right there.
Now, they are getting a little bit from us on the bridge, on the well, on the matching funds, and it's not much, it's not much at all.
Not much at all. Schools get, what, 74 percent that we cannot do, you know, we can't tell them anything to do with it or whatever, they're, they're on balls, so, you know, everybody's gotta take that into consideration, so, anyway.
Any more discussion? The one that differed from the first paper we got.
Do what?
The one that differed from the first.
Uh, there was a couple of errors in numbers, trying to figure out who was here more in less than a year, and how many employees were in each department. I forgot to write off that, I forgot about the county buildings. I knew Jake, and I thought Jake was in the county executives, but he wasn't, he was in county buildings. Uh, I think we ended up with three in helping departments that actually qualified, I was, I was doing the state, set rate, there's three that are considered county as far as any bonuses. Uh, and there was just, there was some changes. Uh, the first number we used was 1,001, uh, trying to put that at 1,000, take home at 12.65 percent. But it turns out last time, we done did 13.6. Did not, no, didn't realize that until I done done the first very much.
Uh, any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
And James Woody?
Pass because of, I have a son that's an employee.
Pass. One, two, three. Eight, yes, one pass.
Well, I don't, don't do, I do that with a son, works for county, but I still reserve my right to vote, but I've exposed that.
It's indirect conflict.
It's indirect conflict, it's not money that comes directly in my household, so, I'm still voting. Yes.
Still voting. Eight, yes, one, one pass.
Motion passed.
What, what's coming on that could do the finalizing of that associated, uh, president amendment pass as well?
Right, so we got to do, uh, do three budget amendments now.
Budget amendment, did on the back.
So, we got the one, what's the number on three again?
There was, it was 002, and I do need to ask it, 002, we set aside and replace 006-18.
That's the one handed up tonight.
We'll be correcting those.
Uh, we still got the sheriff's office and the new John Holt passed out tonight concerning the bonuses, and one from the road department. Don't need to read all these numbers, we just find them.
It's also the top available to the...
I'll just, I'm just going, instead of going over line for line, just read the final numbers, and then anybody wants to go ahead, I have, uh, budget amendment number 006-18 is taking $121,720 of the undead and native fund balance, and proposed expenditure funds is for the bonuses, and it's, it's listed on here, copy every department, every employee. Next budget amendment is 001-18, it's some sheriff's office, it's to show appropriations for 122 fund purchases, the money's coming from drug fund, is that 122, 39? No, that's drug fund, right?
Yes, drug fund, that has to be voted, said.
Go on, Mark, get your, you gotta go on, get your funds set.
What are you listening to? Is that on, uh, 006-18? Make the motion to approve, 006-18.
Second.
Got a motion by John, a second by Daniel, any discussion? Roll call. I got it. Roll him, hold him. Now, we're, we're on this one about the drug fund, right? No, this ain't four-week bonus, taking it out of fund balance. I'm sorry, go ahead.
We can't hear down here on this thing, wasted suggestions, get a loud speaker.
All right, uh, everybody speak, uh, roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
And James Woody?
Yes.
None, yes.
Next budget amendment is 001-18, sheriff's office, uh, it's to show appropriations for 122 fund purchases, which thanks, uh, two vehicles for the two new SROs. Uh, the source fund is from drug fund, and expenditure is transfer out of the drug fund in an amount of $27,239.40.
That's fine, that's drug fund, it's fine, number, uh, three, uh, should be in there.
122?
122.
39000. We probably do these three together, from hand to hand.
Are they all three drug fund?
Uh, two of them are, no of them.
Drug fund, yeah.
That's the only one, the drug fund.
You got to do drug funds, so...
Let them separate.
Make a motion to approve drug fund, false and limited action, that is all.
Hey, hold on one second, I need to ask something before we go in. Okay, on this sheriff's, okay, their, uh, the question is, uh, that will be coming out of their drug fund?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, drug fund, not our fund.
Right, which is good, I am, not, after we give them SROs, I'm glad he done it, instead of asking the county for the money for the vehicles.
Okay, 'cause we ain't got no funds.
I'd like to see it itemized a little bit, can, can you do that?
This one or in the future?
In the future.
Yeah, for sure, I talked to him, stay here tonight. I talked to him today, and he said, he would, in the future, but it's for two vehicles. Is Amanda here tonight?
Yes.
Oh, uh, the vehicles, they come from, uh, for state surplus?
Yes.
Yeah. And, yeah, Mark was asking, you know, in the future, if we want to hand these out, if we want to give a randomized list, I guess like on this, it'll be the vehicle and the description, the VIN number, and the miles, price for each of them.
That'd probably be a separate, associated document.
Just kind of like my what is for.
Yeah, we want to give it to them.
Exactly. Motion to approve 001-18 drug fund.
Second. Got a motion by John, a second by Jeremy, is any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
None, yes.
Hey, next one's also from sheriff's office, 003-18.
We're back on fund 101 now, correct?
Yeah. Well, next one is 004-18. It's show appropriations for work crew spending, proposed source of funds comes from donations and expenditure, donations in amount of $5,000, expenditure of the funds is, uh, repair and maintenance, $1,000, other supplies of material, $1,000, custodial supplies, $500, and other supply of materials, $2,500. This is like Mark was talking about too, gets, well, everything itemized if we can next time, just the list.
Yeah, we need that, we need that itemized to act, so we know what's what.
You got nothing under 101, don't you?
I think it is.
Is that the last one?
Five. It's under 3900, 39... 000, number five is.
Yes, under fund 101.
Yep.
I thought, yeah. You just done four and then five, it's under 101 as well. That 3900, you, you just, you're about, you're about ninety.
What's going down there? Here's 101, 18, we just done it. That's a big plan.
Still have the general fund.
All right, we'll do these together, you know. The last one is, uh, the general fund 101, it's show appropriation for vendor checks that were voided in previous fiscal year and released in this year's budget. Total source of fund is unsigned fund balance in amount of $7,392.34. Proposed expenditure fund is 1,852 in LE supplies, 644.34 in other supplies of material, 4,660 in maintenance and repair, $236 for uniforms, total of 7,392.34.
Motion to approve president amendment 004-18, 005-18.
Second.
Second. Got a motion by John, a second by Mark, any more discussion?
Got one quick question, 004, Ms. Maples, you still here?
Yes.
Okay, that is out of y'all's restricted contribution. Okay, just making sure.
Any more discussion? Yeah, it says here, this was left off the last, uh, previous official year, reissued from this year's budget, was that in their budget for this, uh... No, it was in last year. I mean, it come out of this year's budget, 1819, but the checks weren't wrote before from last year's budget, so that money fell in the fund balance. And the checks were supposed to have been wrote prior to July 1st of 18, but they weren't. Yeah, why didn't they put it back in their budget then, where it'd been outlined? Because we didn't know it. Till, I guess just now, right now?
This one, this amendment is forward, we put it back in our...
They spent this money out of their 1819 budget, but it was for a bill for 1718 budget, but it didn't get paid on time.
The money looped in, it fell into the fund balance July 1st.
So, technically, July 1st, the money wasn't expended, so it fell into the fund balance, and they had still had to pay it, but out of the wrong year's budget, so it's just reimbursing that budget. I don't, I don't understand why they wouldn't have, since they knew that those checks were out there, why they weren't actually put in line out on this new year. The previous. You don't explain that Amanda?
Okay.
It's nobody's, it's their fault.
From last year's budget, and when proof came out, everything was carried out on the day, it was a mistake, and the checks were issued to pay these, the date on those checks was wrong. Therefore, all of those checks had to be voided and reissued. By that time, last year's, this year had closed out, so we couldn't get back into that money, nobody could to reissue these checks. Therefore, it had to be pulled out of this year's budget.
So, we're just looping the money back out of what fell in?
Yes.
When I spread it out?
Yes, just through the state integrity of our original budget.
When did you know that those checks weren't going to be...
When I went to the courthouse and they told me.
Yeah, so you didn't have time to get them back in the budget for, you know, your regular budget?
Well, no, this is the first time we can do amendments, we had to wait until the state passed the budget, so there was nothing I could do until this month.
I don't believe you understand, I meant, if you knew that that didn't get in last year, then did you know in time to get it in the budget for this year?
No.
That's the question.
That's, that's closed out.
I think he's asking why you didn't request it, you requested it in the budget?
Right.
But because we didn't know at that time. Well, that's what I asked, okay?
Well, that's what I said.
Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
None, yes.
Motion passed.
Was that my side or your hand?
That's the old one.
in budget line and recreation. What does it say, REC, State Aid, or REC?
It's restitution, it's not restitution, it's State Aid.
REC, State Aid.
Yes, receipt.
Proposed source of funds is, uh, for the bridge program, 198,294.62. Another one for the bridge program, 2,039.62. The third one for the bridge program, 266,769.62. Fourth one is 14,780 for the road department's fund balance, and the other one is 22,5603 for the SPEC tax. Proposed expenditure fund is $200 for data processing, 14,580 for equipment, vehicle insurance, 467,423.86 for the bridge program, 22,5603 for the SPEC tax. The total is 504,259.89.
Make a motion approved.
Second. Got a motion by Daniel, a second by John Holt, is there any discussion?
So, is this coming out of their budget too? Should we all have to give any of our funding?
No, it's all their money.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
None, yes.
Motion passed. Uh, next is West Polk Fire and Rescue, uh, we need to table it, uh... I need to wish to table it. Second motion. Got a motion by Dewey, and a second by James, to table it, next month, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Daniel Deal?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pipinger?
Yes.
Samantha Trantham?
Yes.
None, yes.
Motion passed. Uh, next is, uh, Polk County Chamber, I had something on ours with Mr. Wood, my party just, uh, I've been approached by several business owners, we're not going to say complaints, just, this is a satisfaction, and, uh, I like to form a committee, uh, of one commissioner and one citizen from each district, and, uh, just, uh, I guess nothing's going to happen overnight, but I like to start looking at, uh, using some of the chamber's money to, like, a county position, and hire a person for commerce and economic development, full-time position, and, uh, incorporate grant right into the position. And just to see where we go from there, just, I mean, try something new, a lot of them feel like the way it is right now, it's not worth, uh, this is from, like, all different types of business owners, but they all got the same opinion, and, uh, we've got, uh, some people in the community that's, uh, willing to volunteer too, on the committee, we got one, what was her name, Samantha?
Jessica Kirby.
Yeah, she's a marketing director for News Channel 12, and, uh, she had done a lot of marketing for the city of Bristol, she married a local guy, and she's willing to contribute some, and a couple others, so, uh, there's nothing to vote on, just to bring up, uh, I'll form a committee, and we'll have, we'll try to meet on it next week or two, and get the committee to see, and is there anything different we got to do, John Holt? I like the committee to be, uh, a commissioner from each district, and a citizen from each district, and a candidate, and do we have to do anything different with what forms the citizen from each district?
No, y'all have to decide on the procedure, they'll have to go out and act, that one of the applications. No, y'all haven't decided on the procedure. They'll have to go out and act, that one of the applications. Just like the plan is made. You know, which is going to stand in policy. And one thing about it, you're not talking about standing committee, you're talking about temporary committee. So you're going to leave it up.
Yeah, just a temporary one till we decide what we're going to do.
It'd be a non-paid committee.
Right, for the commission, ain't it? All right, that was my part. I just wanted to put it out there.
Apparently, you're not very familiar with the Chamber of Commerce.
I'm very familiar with it.
We have a director that does exactly what you're talking about. So why would you go and pay somebody else to do a job that, uh, that's being done by the chamber?
Well, when I hear people on businesses, a lot of them from the whitewater industry, you know, approach me and tell me that it's not working right now, I mean, I'm going to address their concern.
What's not working? The chamber or the tourism?
Uh, any return they get on their money use, and what they do, their own self-advertising and promotion.
Well, there, there don't, the chamber don't push one particular whitewater center or, uh, rafting company. They push the whole county, which involves everybody in the county. Same way with businesses. And, uh, you know, you're, you're trying to double up. Whenever this here was enacted in two thousand and five, it was made for the Chamber of Commerce and industrial development.
Right. Why not, we'll have to, I mean, the private act if we do it, but, I mean, I'm just going to start discussion about it and let the commission decide, you know.
Well, I know you tried this back, uh, over four years ago, done the same thing you wanted to divide it up. Yes, you did. I was on the commission then.
We didn't do nothing about starting a hiring of position.
You would have. You've done the same thing.
Well, we never brought that up, have we, about creating a position?
Yes.
We talked about the lodging tax before, but we never mentioned the hiring of county.
You had, you come in here with a resolution, you had it broke down, how you was going to give so much to this place and so much here, and then hired someone to be a, uh, to direct it.
Hmm, I don't remember hiring nobody. I do remember.
You didn't hire them because it failed.
No, it passed. Five votes, but had five and eighty-six, but I don't think it had nothing on our about creating a new position like this one.
I mean, you're headed in the wrong direction when you start taking some, some, this here's, the Chamber of Commerce has been in place for a very long time.
I'm not, the board is all in the chamber.
You may go out there and find somebody, uh, one or two out of a group of, uh, fifty that don't like it. Think about all the people that's been satisfied with it and their promotion, their business, and, and their, all over the county.
Well, I would say, just guessing, it's fifty percent, and this is not the thought in the chamber, it's just create an option. And plus, the grant rider too is really important to me. I mean, there's, uh, grants everywhere that we could be applying for with a good grant rider and incorporating that in the position.
Right there's the man that should be doing the granting, grant writing. His office ought to be taking care of that.
Well, it's hard, I mean, there's, uh, uh, it's, I mean, you think writing a grant is writing a grant, but experience comes in play. I mean, it's a, uh, it's a unique something to do. It's not as easy as it sounds. And a good grant rider will pay for itself in no time, uh, one that's experienced and done it before.
Well, if you're talking about grants between them, the Chamber of Commerce is very familiar with it. The three-star program is one thing that she takes care of that helps the county do right grants or have grants approved throughout it. So she's doing, she's doing her job, and, uh, I can't see where you're going with that, why you're going with it.
I do have a question now. Uh, how many grants have we wrote in the last two years? Now, I'm not saying how many grants that we applied for. It's a big, huge difference in the two counties. How many grants have we wrote?
Well, is Hoyt Farstone here tonight?
No, that's about, what, I'm asking about the chamber.
Is Adrian here?
Hi.
How many grants has the Chamber of Commerce wrote, not applied for, but sent down a piece of paper and said, okay, we want to do this, and we're writing this grant and turn it in to the state of it?
For every grant we apply for?
No, I could care less about applying. How many grants have y'all wrote?
I'd say six.
You have wrote six from scratch?
Yes.
They weren't based off of grants? You wrote six from scratch?
They were based off grants that were available from the state.
Available, so you applied for the grants.
I wrote a grant application and turned it into a state.
Right.
It's the same thing.
It's, if you said here and come up with the idea to write a grant.
There are some ones out there, but they are very difficult to get.
And that's what I'm asking, can we do those grants that they wrote?
Over the last two years.
That's not applied for, that's, that's actually wrote, wrote scratch.
It's the same thing. I'm sorry, it is the same thing. When you're applying for a grant, you have to provide the description of your project.
This is grant application.
Without your projected outcome, it's all, it's all grant writing. An application is writing a grant. They're one in the same.
Well, I'm done with my part. I just want to discuss that. I will form a committee, and I thought somebody, each district, huh?
She wants to be on it.
Oh, yeah, there's several people that, uh, in the history, it's got. Right, she's a marketing director. I, I, there's several people approached me, pretty good residents, and they're willing to volunteer, so.
Well, maybe we can get a, a committee, you know, that's all freebies.
Right. Oh, like, it'd be like a, a board to work with the position if we create a position. A vice board, and they could meet once a month. Oh, we ain't got enough leaders for trying it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, everybody just needs to pull together with all of our ideals, and, I mean, I don't think Adrian would be against, uh, anybody coming in and trying to work with her and her working with us, and I don't see that, I mean, we all should be trying to go in the same direction.
That's right.
And, uh,
I'm with them. I mean, we tried the same once, if it don't work with us.
And, you know, and they just, I mean, you know, we don't need to knock somebody down just because they're new and they might can, you know, have a fresh eye to something. Uh, we don't need to be negative, you know, towards them over it, uh.
Well, you know, the, what it is, the, the chamber has a meeting that's publicized, the board meets once a month. Anyone can come to it.
It's at twelve o'clock though, right? Most of them are, it's at twelve o'clock though, right? It's at noon.
Twelve o'clock.
But, I mean, most people that work can't come to it.
Well, most of them are working. They take off from their job long enough to have it. We have, the meeting is every month, like I said. Anybody can come to it.
Well, I think that could be, you know, that's fine. I think that could be, uh, once to, every month or two, they could have, you know, we could do a nighttime something, or everybody could be more involved if that's what needs to happen. You know, people this damn time just don't take off from work real easy.
How many, how many of you's been to the chamber meeting?
At twelve o'clock, we can't.
We've had, we've had them at night.
We work.
Yeah.
On occasion. Our next meeting will be at night in the Copper Basin area. Who raised her hand down there?
I've been there.
And one, one person also?
I went to, uh, the little tourism meeting where they're trying to start up the other night, and, uh, you know, we don't need to get fourteen, eleven hundred different committees going on, really, you know, because then you got fourteen chiefs and not no Indians to follow, and, so, anyway.
Yeah, that was another one we started up, wasn't it?
Yeah. So, you know, I don't know. I mean, you just, you won't have enough people to have enough interest when you've got too many different committees going on. So, um, we need to be careful about that.
Well, that was my part on it, and I think, uh,
All right, move on.
James has got the sign, also on the chamber.
We, uh, I'll ask Ms., uh, Lambert if she would give that proposal forward.
I just wanted to ask the division to increase the lodging tax from the current three percent to five percent. Um, it's just a two percent increase. The division would stay the same, two votes would go to the chamber, one vote would become the general fund to debt service. It would almost double what we receive. And it would help us with that certain things, or marketing for weeks. And, uh, just do our job, man.
Did you, did you get that, uh?
The resolution?
Now, what changed since, uh, four years ago, when we were forming? And the chamber was here and now spoke again, right, and said it would devastate the lodging industry in Polk County.
And a lot of our lodging industry is voting against it. They want it to be to three percent because that is cheaper than open accounts. But our visitors aren't looking at lodging tax when they're booking a room. Every family around us is at least five percent, and we have to put discount on our services.
That's exactly what we said four years ago when y'all spoke again. I mean, that's word for word what we said.
Now we have the lodging industry behind a two percent increase to five percent. The chamber is doing a good job with what we receive, and with more, we could do a better one.
If I remember right, we weren't the ones against it. It was the, uh, cabin, cabin owners, and, uh, they were resisting it.
Uh, somebody from the chamber.
And vote, it went along with them. But this was established in two thousand and five. And our prices have gone up since then. I'm sure you all recognize this. I give you the resolution.
Can I read the chamber?
I'll read it. Resolution to amend and increase lodging tax for Polk County. Whereas General Assembly has, uh, Tennessee Code annotated sixty-seven dash four dash seven oh four, declared that counties may levy a privilege tax upon the making of sales by engaging in any vocation, occupation, business, or business activities enumerated, described as referred to in the Tennessee Code annotated sixty-seven four, uh, sixty-seven dash four dash seven oh eight, uh, one through three. Are the engaging in any vocation, occupation, business, or businesses activities enumerated, described as referred to in the Tennessee Code annotated sixty-seven dash four dash seven oh eight four, in the county in which such business, businesses, business activities, locations are occupied and is carried on not to exceed the rate fixed and established for such in the Tennessee Code annotated sixty-seven dash four dash seven oh nine. And whereas pursuant to the state law, Polk County Department provides for a tax at the rate of three percent of the amount paid for a guest room in a hotel or motel within the county unless exemptions apply. And whereas pursuant to the state law, Polk County may charge a hotel motel tax at a rate above two, nine percent provided the county adopt the resolution specifying the tax rate and specifying the location or allotments and, uh, proceeds. And whereas the county finds in the public interest to increase hotel motel tax rate to five percent. And whereas it is necessary that the governing body of Polk County adopt such a tax, which is a resolution of its county body. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county legislative body of Polk County meeting in Reverend Section this fifteenth of November two thousand and eighteen. Section one, a lodging tax increase of two percent from the current three percent to five percent is hereby levied and is administered under the same terms and conditions regarding collection and payment for the state tax, uh, business state tax. Section two, the proceeds of such lodging tax may be payable to the county court clerk. Section three, the proceeds received by the county from the tax shall be designated and used for, A, the county shall retain one-third of the tax proceeds to be applied to the county debt service. B, the county shall provide two-thirds of the tax proceeds to the Polk County, uh, Copper Basin Chamber of Commerce for the purpose of promoting tourism, furthering economical development, and providing the chamber a cooperative natural in order to do the same. Section four, this solution, excuse, this, uh, resolution shall be in effect upon adoption by the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee. All reservations taken prior to, uh, March first, two thousand and nineteen shall be deemed exempt from said taxation. Any, uh, reservations taken after March first, two thousand and nineteen, or July first, two thousand and nineteen, or any further, or any period thereafter shall be subject to such tax, such taxation. So it gives a grace period of the invited may now reservation is, uh, made prior to this year's going up.
Where's the chamber locate that right now? Where's it, where's that? Where's the chamber at?
This. Two thousand and nine Highway sixty-four. We're located directly across from the first dam and Sugar River Park.
Is it rent free?
If we pay utilities and a little rent.
What was the freebies rent?
Um, our portion of it was about eight hundred dollars. At that time, first volunteer bank paid five hundred of our rent.
They did pay it at the new building, did they?
No.
So the last building y'all were in, y'all were paying rent, how much y'all paid?
The last building that we were in, that's, I got you, the total rent was nine hundred and then it increased to thirteen fifty.
So y'all were paying thirteen fifty?
No, we were paying nine hundred. We paid thirteen fifty for two months before we moved to our current location.
Well, nine fifty, that's roughly, uh, eleven thousand a year savings by moving into this new building. So, there's eleven thousand dollars more.
Five hundred of that came from the bank, and the bank no longer funds that. That, that support ended in January.
Oh, I thought the bank quit paying when y'all moved out of Phoenix.
No, no. The bank quit paying in January.
And then, what was the savings when we, uh, insulated the east and west chambers and made more incentive changes?
The savings was about eight hundred dollars a month.
For the employee, too?
Um, that was employee and the rent. D was part-time.
So we got the rent and the employee for eight hundred a month?
The rent there was, uh, four fifty a month, and then, what, maybe a thousand total?
That's twelve thousand. First, the rest is twenty-four thousand dollars.
Yes, we also spend money at the chamber, like, money that we could approach the county for. Currently, there is, uh, ads being played in three, two different theater markets. The chamber just picked up the match on that, so the county didn't.
Oh, I, I'm not, I don't speak to y'all spending that money. I'm just trying to see before y'all ready to, to plant up, and I'll have this break up some more money.
This is not playing a, uh, a, a proposal or a statement on this one. But I'm cheering, I'm cheering. I'd like to listen to the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the.
Can I speak, um, Lake of Quonian for just a second?
Get this taken, and we'll open up.
Okay.
Got a motion by Deacon, get this taken by James, uh, now we go to discussion. David?
Um, well, I'm from Lake of Quonian, and I'm part of the, uh, leadership poll right now, which is from the chamber. Um, well, I'm from Lake of Coine, and I'm part of the, uh, leadership poll right now, which is from the Chamber. So I have a lot of respect for the Chamber. I know what it brings, um, and Adrian, I know she's working hard. Um, I did a little research, uh, because I'm concerned about the lodging tax going up. And I was just curious to see who's paying lodging tax currently in Polk County besides us, and got a printout. Um, and there's a few people on here that are not currently paying. So I think that that needs to be addressed. Um, the other question I had was, we, um, we're lodging, but we compete against private homeowners today, um, that have Airbnb. They use Airbnb, they use vacation rental by owner. They're able to put their homes, their, their rooms out for rent by night. Um, and nobody's really policing that. So we're currently gonna pay three percent, and we are. And that, part of that goes to the Chamber. They get to, um, you know, promote our area and bring people here to vacation. But people are coming here and vacationing, and they're staying in people's homes. And most people that are renting the homes are not paying the three percent lodging into the county. So we are competing against them. They can undercut our prices, we're paying the three percent. Um, these homeowners out here, I realize it's their home. Um, nobody wants to be told what to do with their home and their rent, but this is our business. And we don't want to be told what to do with our money and our business all the time. But it should at least be, uh, even playing field where we're competing against these people. They need to be paying the three percent. So I think before we talk about raising, um, the lodging tax, let's get everybody in the county, Polk County, paying the three percent lodging first before we even talk about going up. And one thing I think the Chamber could do, since this is where they get their money from, is lodging, to fund it primarily. Look up every VRBO in the county, look up every Airbnb, print them all. Get it to Jackie, Jackie send out, um, some kind of, um, like what we get, but we've gotta pay our taxes. And then, then, somebody needs to be, maybe somebody in the Chamber can be responsible for calling up and policing this because, you know, again, we're, kinda have a target on our back because we're a, a business out there. So we're the easy money, come after us. You pay already, let's go up on your taxes already. But we're still competing against these folks, and they are able to undercut us on prices. Um, I have, the ones I've printed off right here, there's no lodging tax on these, and I'll leave them with you. Um, these are just the ones that I took the time to print off and look at. Uh, there's one in here that's not charging any state tax, so no tax period. Uh, most of these are, are charging, uh, state tax, but no lodging tax. So it's real easy to calculate it and see, there's three of these rentals in here that are actually a local business right now. They're listed on here as paying, um, lodging tax in the county, but it's clear on Airbnb that they're not charging that three percent through Airbnb. So I'm sure they're paying some lodging tax to the county, but this almost makes me think that they're somehow able to cheat the system and not pay the full amount. So, um, maybe it's time for a lodging audit in this county. Maybe it's time to audit some, all the, all the lodging.
Apparently it makes something else seem different. There is a kind of greatest state that, uh, you're explaining. Is this a, yeah, uh, they don't pay nothing to state on that, to the Airbnb. That's always, that's, the state is the one that raps it out. You pull up on the internet, this is why I say it's a draft, there's a bunch of folks out there don't pay. But I'm Jerry Handby, Lake of Coine, I'm up in forty-seven years in the lodging business. Got hand full of cabins and motel rooms on the Lake of Coine. I was on the Chamber board when we first started, I tried to get the Chamber, uh, financial basis up and going. And, uh, matter of fact, back then, the commission, he was giving some seed money to help get the Chamber going there for a year, two to three. And I was talking with Sam Island, Dave Island at the time, and he felt, he says, Jerry, finally says, uh, Polk County Chamber Commerce or Chamber Commerce is a group of businesses paid for by the business and not county government. So I started looking into how other counties were funding the Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, other than this membership, business membership. Now I did find out that a lot of, a lot of other folks are, didn't have a lodging tax. And it started in big cities like Atlanta, Nashville, Los Angeles, on down to Cleveland, on down to Detroit. But what I found was the common thread in all those folks was an interstate system. Some of these towns had more than one interstate down there. And what does that mean? Well, interstate is where the people are, year-round. And, uh, you look over Braddock County, they're building, the last twenty years, they're building one motel a year, average. Got elevators in them, three, four stories. Everything we got around here is one story, is a general station, not everybody. But, uh, what the difference is, when you're on the interstate, you have year-round business. Most of us in the lodging industry here in Polk County, we start down the wintertime at zero. We have summer and spring. We have a three-month big bailshaker back down on the fall season, back down to zero in the winter. We started at zero, it's a general station. You get on the interstate, you got this, you got year-round business in here that we don't have. They have the bailshaker too, but we're missing all this down here. So they're able to do year-round business out there. And look at our three months of summer. Years ago, we had three months of summer here. But Dr. Jones and Gilly, not any, not, nobody heard from them. But our school system has started now, the first of August. The year's gotten sooner and sooner and sooner. I've got river guides that teach school in the summertime, and they start back to insert in, uh, in the July. So all this, instead of being a big tour every month, is a weekend right now. That's just a fact. And if you read the paper, Channel nine, plenty of banners, just the last few years, the education system is spending billions and billions of dollars to renew their acquisition systems so they can run them at a hundred and ten percent in the hottest month of the year, which is August, plus electric bill to go with it, but that's another, that's another.
Amen to that.
But, back, back to the, uh, to the tourist thing. But, um, I was on the Chamber board, and I fully support the three percent. I'm not a beginner. I'm far things, but I belong to the Polk County Chamber, I belong to the Braddock County Chamber, I belong to the Chad Baby Chamber, because these are important organizations that help bring tourists to my place. If I didn't get the tourist rent, my comments are coming from somebody who has to collect the lodging tax. That means I've gotta get the folks into my bag before I can collect the college lodging tax, before I can get the Chamber the two dollars and they can't even walk out there. So these are the comments that come from me. And, uh, I was coupled with the three percent. I'm still coupled with the three, with the three percent. And looking at some other things that we can do, I don't think it's a time to raise the, uh, uh, three percent. Uh, rancid, we just keep adding on, adding on to the people who are paying taxes. This young bishop went down there a few years ago and built a couple of nice cabins on the Alcoy River crossing the Gondolaire. And he turned around after a few years and got out of the tourist business and just rented on a monthly or yearly basis. Well, the big deal, well, the big deal is, when you're in your house or cabin, uh, uh, ninety months or more, or yearly basis, you don't have to pay sales tax. Chamber doesn't get anything. Don't have to pay the lodging tax, there is no lodging tax. So we're out there, small businesses, struggling in the wintertime, just to maybe even be, even add above water. And, uh, three percent or two percent more has a real effect on us because we have to compete with those guys over there in that city where we're united and on. And one of the big players we can compete is Christ. We may be, you may call it discounting, whatever you wanna call it. We got these folks here to do anything with it, to collect that lodging tax. And I think Ryan has a couple of comments, but they're, they're, they're timed for everything. We don't feel like that's the time right now to increase the tax, especially smart, not the most.
Ryan, uh, Cook, has some comments too. If he could, just a couple of minutes.
Yeah, wait. So also on Stephanie's search on VRBO and Airbnb, the people that aren't paying the lodging tax. I also did some searching, but I searched businesses that we compete against in lodging and rafting. Um, I found, uh, you know, a rafting company here in Polk County. Um, they don't pay any lodging tax, and it doesn't look like they've ever paid lodging tax. Um, and that, that company's raft one. Um, they have cabins on their website to pay rent, nightly rentals. They've yet to pay anything in the lodging tax to Polk County. Uh, this rafting company also bought another rafting company this past spring, they bought Big Frog. Big Frog used to pay in on the lodging tax until raft one bought them. So I think before we raise another two percent on the people that are paying, maybe the, the Chamber and the commission should look at the people that aren't paying and raise, raise your money that way first, before you come and ask the people that are paying to pay more. Um, the, I, I believe the Chamber board should get together and go through all the established businesses and see if they're paying, and does it look like they're paying the proper amount? I think the Chamber board should get together and go through all, do a search on Airbnb and VRBO in the different regions of Benton, Alcoy, Duck Town, and Copper Hill. I also think that, uh, you know, at Alcoy Inn this fall, we went through a property tax audit. And, uh, that was fine by us. I, I'm, I'm ready for a lodging tax audit here in Polk County. And then, once we complete these steps, uh, we can talk about raising, uh, the lodging tax from there.
Are Airbnb leads and the, the rafting companies, the lodges, not paying the lodging tax? Are they being promoted by the Chamber?
They, they are. Um, I've also, on the Chamber website, the, a couple of companies I referenced, raft one and big frog, are both being promoted by the Chamber, and they're not paying lodging tax.
The, uh, private act was written in two thousand and five. The county court clerk was willing to execute that. We don't ever get that in there. No, it's, it's paid into her. She in turn sends it up to the, uh, trustee. And she gives that, gives us out the money.
When I, when I leave.
The Chamber doesn't have any.
When I leave tonight, I'll, I'll leave you the sheet that I picked up from.
No, I know what you're saying. I'm just saying that we've not, we're not the one that receives that money. So we didn't know or don't know who's actually paying and who's not.
Why?
You can go through this and read it.
First off, we brought up the fact that we don't know for sure if it's legal, if we can legally make them pay with a bed and breakfast. Who brought, who brought that up?
I asked the person in Z, in State County, Z.
So first off, I guess we need to find that out. Because every time you turn around, Lord God, it's illegal. We can't do that, no, no, trust me now, no. So anyway, we need to find that out. And then, uh, hey, I'm for you, let's go after it, tooth and nail. I don't know what we're gonna do, because it's like, if you don't wanna pay Polk County, you don't have to. But I'm for you. So, you know, and then if everybody's paying it, then I myself and I would be for an increase because I still don't think it will hurt you locals' business if you're all paying it. Because you're not, you're, but what is gonna hurt is when you're paying it, and Joe Blow over here is not paying it, then his price is gonna conflict that. So, but if everybody's paying it, then you can balance it. And, and everybody can maybe get a little bit more. But, you know, I see, I can't stand that part, yeah. One of us gets by with something and the other one dies, yeah, I, I, yeah.
Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Just one other comment. If you don't have a law, then we all, all obey it. But there's gotta be some teeth in the law. There's gotta be a penalty, or some reason, if somebody doesn't pay, that there's some penalty there and somebody looking after them, and that's not fair right now. It's just more voluntary than anything.
Yeah, and once we find out if these people owes us, then it needs to be backdated from when they owe us false. Not just, oh, let me come in and start paying, you know, so, yeah, I mean.
Well, if they're collecting it from their customers, then they could be sending it on to the dealer.
Yeah, but they're, exactly, I mean, somebody is either, yeah, it can go both ways.
Probably true.
Right, it can go both ways. They may not be collecting it, not saying it. But if they are, and they're not, then, hmm, that's a bad, big no-no.
We gotta, the county attorney, you know the, I know the process for property tax, personal property. What is the process for back lodging tax? You know, after this, uh, you look into that for it. Maybe get back with, be soon to meet, let's find that.
Yeah, we need that found out, uh, so we know how to proceed further with this. You know, because, uh, we don't need to.
I would love to see, if there's a minister in, trying to bring that together, I'll make, uh.
Yeah.
Glad you too.
Now, I would love to learn what I'm supposed to do. Y'all been walking my office into the bottom of this one, I will let you get a conversation. Because there is no, I didn't take your office till September the fourth. So these people that's been not paying before that, that's not anything to do with me as far as me knowing what I'm supposed to do. I have no clue, to be honest. I was not shown what to do.
That's what I was gonna say. This here went on, it's true.
Yes.
That went on before you come in, I wouldn't say.
Yeah, no, that's.
Right, and, and, you know, and you need to get a hold of your little superiors in Nashville. And, right, 'cause Nashville's not for losing money.
I will bring up this, though. The last meeting that we were at, um, the state did say that they are actually going to look into trying to collect from the Airbnb and the, yes. That is brought up to the state. They are gonna try to collect that and treat it back to the counties that they're in.
That's what I can tell you, babe.
Well, I know when I go to Florida and I do the VRBO thing, whatever, I pay every kind of tax they offer, from surcharges to personal tax to, it's a, it's a, it's a list of tax that lasts.
But I agree with you, they're a lot tougher than you say.
And, and it's a private high. But now, of course, that's in Florida. You know, Tennessee may have some stupid law, then we don't get it. I don't know, but I, Eric will find that out. So, and if not, then we're gonna find out while we ain't getting it.
All right. We gotta, move along with it.
I don't know, thank you, Dave. I'm gonna go ahead. Now, I'm not saying I'm for or against, uh, here in Nashville. I'm not gonna go for a tax increase in the county. When you look at the agenda, it says Polk County Chamber. And then ten minutes ago, we got a resolution saying we're gonna raise taxes. I know people that rent cabins on our end of the county, there ain't none of them, they probably don't know. So, you know, I can't go on nothing, you know, if I have anything on the agenda, if I ever do, and I have, I will have it in the package, that way you can read it and you know where you're gonna go.
And to you, I'm not trying to sound arrogant, but this is the Chamber telling us where we'll spend the money, and we're commisioning, we're not much, but what we do, the county commission delegates, where the money goes, amongst Chamber dollars.
We're not telling, the Chamber's not telling the county commission, uh, any of them. But it's telling, if we increase this, y'all are gonna get so much. That's the way, that's the way the private act is set up. That's the law.
It is, but we're changing to try that. We've changed, it's gonna be changed anyway, to do this. So when we do, we, I think it should be a commission for the proceeding. We will, we the first one.
Should we start getting stuff like this in our pockets? Because my pockets, uh, I mean, I really don't want to go in there.
Yeah, I mean, I just change, I'll go on something that'll just boom, just hear it, you know, lots of times, just bam bam. I mean, I gotta think things and talk to people and I would input, you know, on what people want and, you know, from your constituents, uh, you know, lots of times, and sometimes you just gotta do it, you know, so, anyway, we just gotta, but like I said, we gotta, we gotta be, we gotta move on.
So all you just wanna say that, what you want.
The motion, well, we, uh, say, we got motion, say, uh, roll down.
Greg Bruce?
No.
Debbie Davis, no. Samuel Dale?
No.
Judy Esteban?
No.
Mark Evans?
No.
Jeremy Kinsey?
No.
Mark Davis?
No.
Matthew Grant? Dan Swed?
Yes.
Eight nine one, yes.
Motion, please. Uh, next is East Polk Ball Field lot, uh, we, we we had the, uh, building committee meeting back in October of initiative three. It was, it was close to the, excuse me, for the commission, the committee, bring that back to the commission to bring it up before voters, before the actual commission, uh, so if you all won't proceed further in, uh, dealing with the East Polk Ball Field, the lighting issues that they have there. So, the motion, thanks to the. The committee votes next, and we're back to the commission.
So maybe, that'll bring back the commission.
Yes, and, and what it is, is the, is the lights that Matt brought to the attention of the commission. There's five poles, like, five, six foot poles, it's up there now.
We've got several, I, I don't know, six, maybe five or six poles, but they're too short for it. The state has changed the, uh, that they've got to be ninety feet. And I'm not sure whether that's ninety feet above the ground or off the whole pole beam, what, part in them counts as the ninety feet. And we got those, but we're, they're out there.
But we wouldn't be able to use the sixty foot pole beam behind.
We, we was wanting to use those for backstop and, you know, that behind, on two fields. There's big gullys behind motor, behind the backstop. They get, they'll go hundred, hundred feet to put down, and they're real stupid. About a ball, ball gone. Somebody's gotta go get it. And each kid wants to run up and down them banks, well, somebody's gonna get hurt. And, but anyway, the tri-state EMC says, the guys that, when I talked to, said that they would volunteer their time and use, they'd have to get permission to use the EMC's, uh, truck, you know, equipment. We got, they would volunteer their time to set those poles behind the backstops and hang netting to keep balls from going in the gullys to keep down a, you know, a, a, a better chance that somebody get, get knocked or hurt. And, uh, but there's only, the, according to the specs that the, uh, uh, PBA did for that, that field that we're talking about, they've done it three times. And it only takes four poles and the lights naturally, uh, and, and setting those and naturally having the wiring and all this shit in ground. All that, and then buildings that have the, maybe the transformer here, side or whatever.
So, we just need to give motion, say, they leave.
The motion, the, the motion's already, already there to do it, but not by this committee.
Right, that's what we need to do right now, and.
I'd say, I might motion to, to that deal.
So.
Got a motion by.
Samantha.
By what?
Samantha, second.
Got a motion by Daniel, second by Samantha. Any more discussion? I broke up.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Samuel Dale?
Yes.
Judy Esteban?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
Mark Davis?
Yes.
Matthew Grant? Dan Swed?
Yes, that, desirable, commission request.
Put some information in the packet, after looking over the lease that Mr. Hatchard gave me. They're not paying with the ship, they've got over fifty acres up there and their lease says it should increase every year according to the consumer price index, but that's never happened. They're way underpaying, twelve thousand dollars a year for fifty something acres. And the money's going right back to them so they can do improvements, but I believe that we need to have our county attorney find out exactly what they owe us and what's going on with their lease, because it's, looks very shady. We'll see that.
Come back.
Yeah, he didn't even know it was on the agenda, nobody contacted him, so I don't think that this needs to be any further destruction, because he had it in his head.
No, tell him, I'm like motion.
Second.
Got a motion, by Samantha, uh, second by David, you're hearing, a good post to call.
I'm glad you're.
All right, all right.
I don't think, any more discussion, well, asking the attorney to look at, if it wasn't necessarily, uh, be necessary that he be involved, but I'm just looking.
Any more discussion? I broke up.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Samuel Dale?
Yes.
Judy Esteban?
No.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
Josh Evans?
Yes.
Matthew Grant?
No.
Seven house, three house?
Motion, please, the next sanitation issue, please, now that's one. That has to be.
Well, they don't, they're both on sanitation.
Okay, sorry.
We keep that away, there's really nothing to bother them, it's just informing.
I guess force the paper will help a lot too, if you put it in the paper. I was at the dump a couple of weeks ago, putting my trash in, the big truckload of trailer pulls in behind me, or next to it, dumping stuff in, and they have friendly county paddocks, and I begin to question, the attendant's there and she says, yes, they do it all the time, but they have permits. They bring in a truckload of twelve mattresses, no, twenty-two mattresses, they said last week, and dump it in our bins. I don't know how a house here in Polk County can have twenty-two beds in a house, a dozen mattresses. But they're just advantage of our system here. Apparently, they're getting hundreds of permits out here. And it's costing our county, and I think that we need to revoke all the permits and have them rea- reapply and make sure they are legitimate Polk County residents. And in their circumstances, like people's got second homes, you know, like one in Florida, one in here, whatever situation. And under those circumstances, and they get questioned at the dump, they are allowed to use our dumps. But if it's questionable, that comes to county executive, the chairman of sanitation, if they didn't get a permit, you know, tell, you know, show the property tax receipt, light bill receipt, you know, and tell why they do have the right to, and then when it's approved, they get the permit. But what we're looking at, uh, we're just questioning, you know, the circumstances, some of the permits. So what we're doing is, uh, just informing the sanitation workers and public in the paper, any permit dated before September first, two thousand and eighteen is void and, y'all, have to reapply. It has to be dated after September first, twenty eighteen to be valid. That's moving on, lawyer, if want, commission will.
Last one, uh, the reappointment of the county lawyer. Should've been, uh, done, and, uh, but I make a motion that we, uh, reappoint, uh, Eric Brooks as our county attorney.
I say that motion.
Got a motion by James, second by John. He had Eric Brooks one more year, any discussion?
Just a little, we think we'll be at the same rate that we were at the previous time, agreed to. And one accepted at the same rate as previous.
Well, the right hat puts, uh, two hundred, two fifty.
Did what then?
Two hundred for transaction, and two fifty for litigation.
Is that, that was, was that the current? This whole contract with the current? Or is that an increase?
I think it is.
What was the previous?
It was, uh, one fifty, two fifty.
One fifty, two fifty, that's.
Two hundred, two fifty.
Are you still working with Jim Lope in his, uh, last, uh, uh, assistant attorney?
Well, uh, I've, I've been actually with the county attorney.
Yeah, uh, the last contract we done is, uh, that was, that part with Lope.
Well, he's a, I talked to him the other day, he said he still, he wanted to work on something, he still work on things. Like, the whole.
That's all I did.
Any more discussion?
Roll down.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Samuel Dale?
Yes.
Judy Esteban?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
Mark Davis?
Yes.
Matthew Grant? Dan Swed?
Yes.
I guess.
I'm on, uh, we got thirty-eight minutes left, we're gonna try to get all in. I'm gonna change a few around, based on what I think the time seems to, just in case we hit the time limit. Uh, we're gonna skip one, first we're gonna go to PCRS retirement contribution, but, can't, there's a passion.
This is Justin Ball, he, he actually came today to the office and he wanted to come before the commission to explain what the, how he's, what he's gonna be with, uh, new plan that he had suggested.
Yeah, in March of this year, I was actually here, I was a community, you remember that, that he passed the resolutions for four one tag, four fifty seven plan in the state. This does not impact, uh, PCRS at all, so PCRS has stated that it's a payment for the employees, but basically what they're allowed was for your employees to contribute, they didn't link up four one tag or four fifty seven plan. Um, you know, the paperwork was actually sent in, we never received it, uh, and so the deadline passed on that. Uh, and so that was, I think, March, when that took place, I think the deadlines, us getting all that, and the date of those resolutions was a lot harder. So basically what we're back here doing is, is presenting the resolutions again, these have a February, I think February first deadline, deadline on that. So as long as we got these passed on and everything, if we got back to it, uh, February first, and that will. So happy to answer any questions, but I'm just a new, new visitor here, uh, county justice, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
It's not much, it's not one of these.
The way it's set up currently, no, not much, so, because y'all are contributing to PCRS, you know, most likely don't do it. It's a digital benefit, it's a policy county, you know, and it's voluntary, but they don't have to.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to, they give some like this more than I'm excited for this, I put a few up on my, because it is quite big. But that is.
I make a motion, uh, these are the first on section four, and. Resolution, resolution.
That's what I'm, so, it is by resolution.
Yes, so the, the resolution for four one tag and then a resolution for four.
Only that's the one that I had, I don't, no, no, I didn't know that. I had commissioners call me because of the signatures, I was not aware of what was in the pack. This is the one that, this was here, this is the one that my office has been working on. Is this, that's what I had on me, again, to put it out. I believe the one that was in the package was to show the, the employees that were wanting this done back in March.
Yeah, uh, it kinda started July, March, and so they got some signatures of employees that were interested. But I think that's what's in your package, it was just.
So what, that is nine to nothing, now what step am I wanting to do?
Sign this paper here, and we'll get the ball rolled.
Approved, you mean, ball rolled?
Y'all, y'all vote to approve it, give me the signatures, we'll get the ball rolled, then we can take this office, and then whatever, whatever part of employees want to contribute to this, we'll be able to as well, if there is any commission, if anybody drops a check in the county.
And don't try to scare her.
It's not, it's totally voluntary, it's open.
You got a motion on this?
I think the motion is accepted, that is presented.
Second.
Motion by David, say for that, then say for David, any more discussion?
I got one thing.
Okay.
I'm in the gym, and I was the chairman of the commission, you were done. And I, I signed that paper three times, and, uh, those who came that watched me do it, one night. I don't know why, I get maybe get time back in y'all. Y'all, I, I signed it three years.
We, we're all there.
Yeah.
And I'm working, man, but I'm working, but I'm working to the fifth floor, cause after the white hole somewhere, and then, and then.
Well, I don't think that they got shit to, I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't know what happened.
Yeah, me too. I'm working, so.
If you don't think I'll fix it, and I did sign it, I'll give it to you, not to the people. Roll down.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Samuel Dale?
Yes.
Judy Esteban?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
On what you can do?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on. Try, keep rolling, I don't know what I'm doing, uh, saying next is through the planning mission form, or planning mission, is that? That way. Hey, Mr. Chairman, was that the four one or four fifty seven, or both of them?
Both.
Okay. Yeah, so, y'all win. Again. Good, okay.
Now, do apologize, I'm giving this into the party. We have a right to, oh, the way you miss, this viewer. We went back and pulled, uh, the pile of management in the office that played with us. To me, we pulled those as well, let's put the word out as far as this is good. And, uh, this comes as a recommendation by me, through the board, you can either accept or reject. And he asked to come to district two, since this viewer was in district two.
Did you find any old, uh, applications?
Yes, there were some older applications, and there were some, like, a lot of applications from one district, one family, very few, if any, in district two. So there were all applications, all without that box.
So we gonna get a chalk, chalk, uh, says, is your informant?
Yes, sir.
We have confirmation power.
Yes.
Or objection, but he has to present.
This is plan, plan board. Yes, sir, that, that is for the plan board.
The black frame is nine one one board, you recommend with the firm, we have nine, it's another name.
Yes, yeah, if you do not accept, then I will give you another name.
Isn't that kind of a conflict of interest for a real estate person to be on the plan?
I think that's what actually helps, because you've got somebody that knows kind of where the market is, far as to help to, to be able to see that. More than an asset, so.
I would too, and that's what I'm on, we haven't got this great work, you know.
The left.
If you're in the field, I might just, yeah, plan board.
Motion. How long is this appointment for?
It, it is time.
Seven or four, and two, three, it's time. Does he let us?
So how much is left on hers? So it's been, I might make a motion, so, thank you to that man here for, for the last remainder, serve iron, and then be up again when that, this time. I'll make that motion. Say, got a motion by you, say for the mark, any more discussion?
What, what is the length of the term?
Hers was four.
Not a year time.
Sure.
Who's, hers was, some of them four years. There's a, he's just gonna be serving a year.
We're gonna, what is left on her two year time? Roll down.
Greg Bruce?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Samuel Dale?
Yes.
Judy Esteban?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy King?
Yes.
Tom Fisher?
Yes.
Matt Johnson? John Cuddy?
Yes. Okay, uh, budget, man, that was, that's our income, okay, uh, soil water confirmation, okay.
Bill, you. Hey, man. Bill's gonna speak on my behalf, myself, just let everybody, myself, and Mark, both on the soil water confirmation board. Uh, we're having that out there, and uh, Mark and I just will both let that be known, that if we are, currently certain on soil water, uh, the true know that we're with us, so people will be the, as far as the soil water.
Soil water, we've got the four pieces of equipment that the team can use, uh, two sawed drills, lime spreader, and veneer spreader. And we, sometimes we have it in the show barn, anything comes up, we've got available, and uh, we'd just like to have a spot of ground to build a shed on, and put them in, uh, wherever, you know, the thing to be good, and we've got the money to uh, build that shed, or, you know, sort of the property and thing, but across, you know, wherever the part, part of land kind of. And we'd like to have it in the, see if the other office up there, in that area, if it's possible.
Have you guys brought down there for the uh oh four plus, in that lower section, across the water? Is there any location out there? Bill, to me, to, Bill, to me, meet y'all, and uh, is this time seems to be, we can.
No, we just, we just like to have it, you know, if there's a possibility of getting a spot, we're gonna, well, probably what we're thinking is a forty eight feet by twenty feet foot building. Four bays, twelve foot to twenty foot, and so that's all the room we'd have to have, but it needs to be at a place where you can pull up and back into it in a straight. But just so everybody that rents, is not gonna be a real good driver like you are, very.
I know, I'm, I was saying, Mike, can everybody build, make it next year, five dollars, that'd be enough for a dollar. That's that, that, that's Tuesday, thank you. I don't know how to do this. Now, it's on me, please, point say. Yeah, I work. Well, I have a bill for me, making, we'll make a review, we're trying to, we go, whatever five that gives down, we'll get about thirty minute four dollars. Just needs to be, if, so, everybody can get their head together, decide where the best place to put it, right, if it's available, you know. We'll undo that and put on the, place on the, they seem to meet. I have a skill to uh bridge over High Wassy River on four levels. Uh, I'll uh, let uh, Tim Woody, who's a veteran, also play something out there.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Woody. Hi, Mr. Mr. Woody, Chairman Bruits, Commissioner, appreciate the time, and I'll try to make this pretty quick. Uh, for those of y'all who don't know Mr. Ben Oldwood, he uh, he was a great man, he was a Korean War veteran, uh, maker of poker downy, uh, had the brutes and degrees of creed for the alliance area. At the age of eighteen, he joined the military, uh, joined the army, and uh, was sent off to the Korean War. So he was taken prisoner and held captive for two and a half years. Uh, on his return, he came back and done everything he could to enrich the lives of all the veterans and all the surrounding counties. And he uh, he started many national programs, and was a founder of the Korean XPOW uh, foundation. Uh, the reason why, I believe y'all have a letter in your package, the reason why we're uh, we're asking to have this bridge named after Mr. Oldwood, is just a small gesture to uh, to carry on his memory, and his legacy of what uh, what he's done for the veterans and the sacrifices he made for each and every person in this room. And uh, with the commission's approval, we'll have that supposed to not eleven, we'll uh, we'll cover our cops for the signs. Thank you.
Make the person who presented.
Second.
Uh, motion, but do you think so for a day, is there any more discussion? Rokeau.
Fred Brooks?
Yes.
Eddie Davis?
Yes.
Sandra Dion?
Yes.
Do you have some?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy King?
Yes.
Tom Fisher?
Yes.
Samantha Travis? And John Cuddy?
Yes. Next is uh courthouse issue, Commissioner. I'd like to put, put me as Commissioner's, I'd like to have the elected officials in the courthouse have the employees start parking, and park not above the uh, driver, unless, you know, they're handicapped or something, just to give the county, or the people who can, a place to park, to come into the courthouse without driving around there, we're looking for a parking place. So I'd just like to ask them to do that. Good motions. I think we see good motion, but. He just might, he's asking them to.
Yeah, I just.
By the orders.
We don't want to have to impose it, uh, you know, we're, we're not out making anybody my effort. It's just, if you possibly can, please consider.
That's all I had. Uh, next is uh, the major making location, major restaurant. The second district feels left out, all you need at is in Benton or Copper Hill, and there's three districts here. Matter of fact, the largest district is District Two, landwise. I'd like it to rotate just like the chairman does each time. So I make a motion that we start rotating like we do the chairman.
Will we start rotating?
First, second, third district, rather than just first, third, first, third, first, third.
So we're gonna have to run them in twice, and see if we rotate them up and forth every now and then?
Twice out of three months.
Are we gonna be the county town, or the, or this is pretty good too?
Wherever first, wherever I don't need. You may split up Benton four.
We've had this discussion so before. Benton is county C, why do we have it above, because it, it pushes the people up there, out of reach with our elected officials as far as commission goes, and because they have a courthouse up there as well, is due to a law that's quite over and on, really only affects public, and also have two grand, it's one above and one below. So we agreed years ago to have the limits above and below. But now down here, Benton, thi- this courthouse is probably about eight or the delano line, because it is open, and this there's probably not just a couple miles difference in one of this, and the other, it's fairly well certain. And you're in District Two, facing up part of the lines. And most of the people come from there, come down there. So you're actually closer. You're actually closer to Benton, coming back when we're going. That's just my two fingers in the mouth, I, I go in the board. We look like, look like bad. When I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. When we have meetings here, there have been times, especially in Virginia, when we needed some information from Red County Board of Lords, or the Presties Office, or the County Board's Office. And since we were here, it was easy to get that information, there's been times above the mountains, and we need that information, and put it out for a while, because the information was here in Benton. Now, if you go from, every other time, there are three times to increase the possibility of getting the information through the courthouse.
I ain't gonna try to sugarcoat it, nah. I, I think it worked pretty well, the way it has the last twenty years, and however long it's been. Ninety two dollars a month ain't working, you know.
Well, we've just always been above the mountains, below the mountains, you know, we do, we just stay, we're just two, we're just divided sort of kind of in, in two.
It's fair, most we don't have to meet the school, we bring college to the school, and when the school board meets there, it's because it's nonviolent.
But the last meeting I was at, there was eight from this side, and two from the third district. And we met the third district.
But it's still red, and it's back and forth, I mean.
Oh, that's.
I, I don't really see any way to do it, to keep the fire at surface. One, one, one.
It's important for you, so.
Getting out, out now, I've never really had any complaints come out this way, too, on making locations, and you had a lot of complaints up in some areas.
Yeah, motion, my own second, Mr. Dean, motion. Motion dies for that to say. We got uh and then the mind, when they suspend the rules before, uh county road list. Is that all we got? Uh, yeah, that, I'm asking straight.
Make a motion to suspend the rules on Rock County road list.
Uh, motion, but John, second, but do you have any discussion on rules to spend?
Why do we suspend?
The, this second agenda, there's a agenda on that, and we can do that, like somebody can put something on the agenda, as long as we get it mailed out to them. But we gotta suspend the rules before we take action, we, this is pretty common, I mean, we do it all the time. Any more discussion? Uh, we had a motion, but John, second, but do you? Uh, Rokeau.
Fred Brooks?
Yes.
Eddie Davis?
Yes.
Sandra Dion?
Yes.
Do you have some?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Yes.
Matt Johnson?
Yes. Yes. I don't know, the road list, correction, on Calvin Lane, I hope you have your open bar.
Like Mr. Chairman, uh, just, just trying to keep it pretty simple here as far as the change goes. It's uh, if you look on the second page, I got uh, three pictures there showing, you know, what the uh, old diagram, uh, diagram A shows how the lists uh, describe uh, Newman Road, I'm sorry, Old State Road and Wumble Lane. And then uh, in two thousand and thirteen, we adopted in the correction of the names uh, to Newman Road and Newman Road B, which is what we currently use now, the uh, uh, according to the mapping, the state mapping, it showed uh, uh, adding up the mileage together, which is, it ultimately ended up looking sort of like the diagram B, which both shows that both roads come in from Farner Road and proceed on. Uh, the correction that we need on uh, diagram C is what, what is needed today. And uh, the reason for me having to bring this to the commission is the addition of uh, Calvin Lane being added to the road list, and the mileage is not, not uh, changing on that. Uh, the, it's just an addition of a name, it's the same road that's always been there. Uh, but we have to have Newman Road, Newman Road B, and Calvin Lane. And uh, diagram C shows that, that changed, and I'd like the commission to review and accept this if you would please.
Or what area is this uh, is this in?
Farner. Farner Road, or Farner area.
Okay, so what you're saying, Roy, Jimmy, is this is not adding a new road to your road?
No. No, this is just.
This is a road that's been under care for.
Oh, it's been, you know, for a long time.
Okay.
Way before I came.
It's not one of these roads that, which won't be in, in discussion here for too long, that goes to nothing.
No, it's an existing road.
Road road.
And all, the reason why you have to approve it is because of the, the addition of the name. The mileage, if you add up those mileages, it would be the same at the bottom as what it would be at the top.
Okay, yes.
Which is the Old State Road and Wumble Lane. And that would be consistent with what the mapping has today, as well as what it had in the past. Uh, back in uh, let's see if I got the year here, eighty seven, is the oldest map I have in there.
Mike, motion two, third.
Got a motion, but Dan, second, the chairman, any more discussion? Rokeau.
Fred Brooks?
Yes.
Eddie Davis?
Yes.
She is?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy King?
Yes.
Tom Fisher?
Yes.
Samantha Travis? And John Cuddy?
Yes. Motion, five, that covers the same line, the uh next, uh, man, it's like.
I know that uh, we've had a problem with elections, before we hold our elections there, in the third district. And then the county commission, uh, did not have that move. I know Steve Gadsman, um, uh, he know this, but uh our community's in a way, how long you can see them in start. And it's, it's not handicap successful, somebody doesn't do it here, everybody's got the map. I don't want it moved there, because uh, it's true, or used to be. But it's behind the Copper Hill box, and the Duck Town box, and it's that minimal people, and it's not bigger than a garden, but you don't want, you don't mind.
It was brought up in a meeting, and the vote was three to two, the.
Yeah, that's what I'll move. But I know the county commission put more pressure on this, and it was bad.
We can uh, give our opinion, but can we?
Simon, that's. You might not gonna sign it, because you got more power.
Oh, yeah, I know, I'm, yeah, yeah, I can see it.
You got tired to a lot of stuff.
If you come down to safety issues, you're gonna do it too, because if you're working, or if you can't get in and out of, wind over that little hill, I was trying to get in, light was blinding. Can't tell if we run over somebody or not, you know.
Well, there's not even parking, except, you know, out in the parking lot, because in front of garage doors, where the fire trucks and all that's at. It's not supposed to be parked in, and I know in the last election, there was a bunch of people parked in those places in front of the doors. It hasn't got out, they, they couldn't got it. Y'all want to discuss again?
It took a nice time, like, for us.
County commission.
Our next general nation.
Commission, we're out there, and and straight away, it was on the column, it was here, but it's a way of.
Maybe, I haven't put it back on again, but. I could ask them to put it on again, to discuss it, and possibly log on.
So would y'all, we're good, uh, great, man, the next place, I'll be out there. Yeah, I'm doing a good time to look into. I guess what, uh, March twenty twenty, next primaries, up there next week?
Yeah.
That primary, when the cross recessor and road two ten runs, that primary's always in March, it may, for whatever reason.
See, and they changed something with January?
Might have, but I know we got that two years.
I'm not positive, but I, we got, we got, we got it uh, in the office, so that, out there, so.
I'm not positive, but I, we've got, we've got, we've got it, uh, in the office, uh, out to, uh, when they are in your, uh.
Well, you can, you can ask anybody, that's right, that's it, if they don't agree with you, they're often ahead, something wrong. On up the grocery, I'd like to ask, just brought up that parking, we're here to set a parking lot, is that a private parking lot? This county own it?
We didn't bank on it, they've always give candy for missing use.
I guess, I don't know, I don't have them, but, they willing to park one, they built them all the brands.
That's right, we were, I don't say, I don't, but lifetime is striped, yeah, paid for, they had it striped, lifetime is striped, and we as long as do it whenever we done that courthouse, but Brian had actually striped it, it was in pretty good shape, so we just, we didn't see it described.
Excuse me, I won't be able to bring that up the next meeting, because it's too late, it's a billion thing right now, but we've got plenty of time.
Oh, yeah, it's a good time.
But, uh, but, I, it won't be, won't be on the agenda, we'd be log on. But this next meeting was scheduled to, uh, only go over the votes and certify the.
We all got, uh, oh, we're at, uh, next election, not to, frame twenty twenty, just got to give out on the notice and paper that's been changed.
Uh, I believe it's sixty, so we're looking, right, it's been used, we got.
I don't even know what they're putting notice in, lifetime do, and lots of.
Well, you got some, they're supposed to have.
Yeah, they're supposed to, if it's supposed to.
But it didn't, I'll get to it.
It, it works, it was works for a firm, what's going on there, so.
Oh, my, you got the light, I thought it was worth the thing. My next motion, we, uh, thanks.
Second.
Thank you, Jerry.
And, uh, what's that, we got refreshments, everybody please grab some, and we are loading.